Okay, we're ready to start the public hearing of the site plan approval for construction of scenic road to 314 Glen Road. We would like to try and hold the discussion to half an hour. If you could limit your presentation time to say fifteen or twenty minutes, that gives us ten or fifteen minutes for questions and comments on board or from people in the audience. I have Hal Adel out of the chairman of the planning board, and the other board members are?
David Mendelson.
Roy Channal-Bash.
Steve Oppenheimer and?
Suzette Goriot.
Suzette Goriot. In South Beach.
Don't rub it in.
I don't know.
Right, so that having been said, please make your presentation and tell us what you have to add.
Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the board, team, baron, builder. Proposed to build a sixty-eight hundred square foot house on 314 Glen Road, it's a three point five acre site. And the house presently sits, the existing houses in front of it here. The new houses to be set about ten or fifteen feet behind it. We have a twelve-foot driveway going up the side, seventeen around the house, using the existing opening on the site. Site drops off about four to five feet to the left, so we have two small retaining walls on the left side. We've got infiltration galleries in the back and the front, septic system underneath the driveway on the right side.
Go ahead.
Okay, so my name is Tom DeCursio, I'm the site engineer for the order Mr. Barron. And I can give you a little more in-depth description of the site and the proposed work. It's a three point six eight acre property, and on the schematic, you can see that there is a perennial stream at the southern end of the lot that flows through the back. There's some bordering vegetated wetland associated with the stream, and there's another wetland area toward the front of the northern end of the lot that is connected by an intermittent brook to the wetland system back at the south end. So the wetlands were delineated by Goddard Consulting, and they have applied for and received an order of conditions for the project from the Conservation Commission. So you can see this line on the schematic represents the two hundred foot buffer from the perennial stream that we have stayed out of, so that sort of represented our limited work to the south. We maintained it at minimum a twenty-five foot offset from the bordering vegetated wetland on the side of the lot also. So the, I highlighted here sort of the limit of work for the project, so given the wetland constraints, it's a three point six eight acre site, but it's a, you know, less than twenty-five percent of it is involved in the project. Existing house highlighted here, a small house that's been unoccupied for some time, an existing gravel driveway. And I've highlighted on the existing conditions plan, which was the first sheet of the set that was submitted for the permit, the building envelope, given zoning setbacks and the wetland setbacks that I discussed about. So as Dean mentioned, proposal. It's highlighted here, new house just sort of just behind the existing house location. With the driveway that uses the existing opening in the wall off Glen Road, circles next to the house. Highlighted in red, this is the site plan, the second plan of the set for the permit, the proposed septic system location, and the proposed stormwater management locations. There's some, there's, it's a ledge site, so we were constrained by soil ledge conditions as to where we could locate the stormwater and the septic, but we did come up with a design that worked given that. So we've shown the proposed, each proposal for pool and some retaining walls in the back. The house will sit on the, the lot slopes from east to west downward toward the wetland area. So we're sort of maintaining, holding the grade at the high side of the lot, given the proposed septic location in the driveway. We're sort of fixed at that location that puts the other end of the house at pretty much existing grade, so given that it's a ledge site, it works out well that there's not a lot of cutting that'll have to be done for the house construction, therefore, we don't anticipate definitely any blasting to be necessary. So we're trying to fit it into site conditions, given the ledge conditions and the topography. The last sheet that was part of the set was the erosion control plan. As I said, generally, this topography flows down toward the wetland, so, and this was reviewed by the Conservation Commission too. We've proposed sediment controls for during construction to make sure we don't have any impact to the wetland resource areas, and this sheet details those measures. Generally, that's the site proposal, Dean can talk about architectural proposals, landscaping, that kind of.
Who's talking about those?
Uh, Dean can talk about those.
All right, who's doing the landscaping, you're doing the landscaping? Let's talk about those.
So we have the poneus fastigadas on the north side of the lot, buffering between 326 and 314. And we increased the size of the trees along the scenic road, those have gone up in size from ten to twelves, and twelves to fourteens, as is recommended at the sidewalk. And we've also mixed some of the small flowering shrubs in amongst those trees on the scenic road as well. So we have a pretty standard playing plan all the way around, the foundation in the back. And we're trying to keep it at a minimum so we have as much open space as possible. There is a shade tree in the front being planted, and we're trying to preserve the trees on the outside edge. We're only removing twelve trees inside the whole building core, and the majority of them are dead already. They're all pretty much infested with that.
What's the screen on the right hand side?
These are fastigada pines, we need to tend for pines.
Is there an actual landscape plan?
Yeah. We should have had a copy of that.
Can you just cut the engineering?
This is the plan that you've discussed.
Turn over that thing, that's the microphone.
Cut through.
Yeah, there is, the wetland and floodplain conservation district, corresponding floodlines highlighted on the site plan sheet.
Is that the one percent flood?
Yes.
So as you can see, the fastigadas up over here, which are the pines, and these have been increased in size, and these pines.
Have you seen those yet? Okay, so maybe if you could just go through that again.
Okay, yeah, we increased the size of the ones along the road from ten to twelves, and we itemized those in the detail at the bottom, and then we added the height on these as well.
Did you increase the size?
Yeah, we increased the size, and we talked to the butter who owns 326, and he asked that we add a few trees to the left and right, so probably add four trees to the either end, so we'd add eight more, and then he was, yeah, with the screen.
No?
Did you talk to the neighbor about the bittersweet?
No, but those trees that the bittersweet are on are off of the property line.
Exactly, why you should talk?
Yeah, so if he wants to do anything about it, we're gonna turn it out.
Take these over and take time.
Yeah.
Because those are in bad condition.
Yeah, yeah, so something's gonna be done going up the other property line to control the bittersweet. But at this time, the majority of it's on the line.
So what's all, what kind of trees and shrubs are all used?
Well, the whole detail is here, we're using spruces and pines intermixed.
No deciduous?
We had some with denwings and some of the northern as well.
No deciduous trees?
Yeah, there's some, there's a bunch of Norway maples.
You've got a bunch of existing small Norway maples and ashes that already exist that we're trying to plant in amongst, to preserve.
Are these, any of these deciduous?
Those are brattler's pear.
They're pretty much all deciduous.
And these are all deciduous on the outside edge, and up on the upper side, so we want him.
So many of these are all overgrown with bittersweet, there's all, there's a bittersweet back in here, poison ivy back in here, bittersweet back in here. This is, this is clearing itself out with bittersweet.
Are there any really nice specimen trees deciduous, or otherwise everything removed, you said, or tree being removed, or done? But are there any?
The only, I mean, there's a really nice sugar maple on the property that it's nectar smackable in the middle.
But what tree?
Yeah, it's the one tree with the one that around, you can't.
Okay, we'll get the, we'll get the questions and comments out. Lighting, can you do a lighting?
Yeah, we had a lighting plan, although the women's were not able before, we have stayed under the limit. We do not unfortunately that.
We were before.
The one that we had submitted to the town.
No, no, but we, you're presenting to us right now, so what, what is the lighting plan? What is, what are the fixtures?
Unfortunately, that plan was, my original was given to the town, and it's on the hard drive as well. And I didn't have a copy in this set, unfortunately, I apologize for that.
Did you, while she's looking for it, did you do an area survey of the, of the houses in the vicinity and the sizes?
Yes, we did a survey here, we have a cut through.
No, no, that's a side section, no, I'm talking about the sizes of the neighboring houses RGFA compared to the existing house RGFA and the proposed, did you do that plan?
Which would also show the location of those houses, and the trajectory position of this house.
Right, we did the survey, I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
You didn't do that?
I think the house next to it on.
Were you asked to do that one?
Don't remember that, I remember you asked me to do that.
I think we talked about it in one of the person meetings.
That's, absolutely.
But what is the proposed RGFA?
Yeah, that's.
So it's one sixty-seven hundred.
How much?
Sixty-seven hundred square feet.
And what's the existing?
The house is eighteen hundred.
Do you know whether you're gonna have to, is this a balanced site, or are you gonna have to haul material off of it?
We're gonna have to haul material off?
We need about two hundred yards.
It's a special permit, did anybody tell you that?
If we're under a thousand yards, I thought.
Are you under a thousand?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so you furnished the, uh, player with the calculations on that?
So it's on the site plan.
Yeah, we have it on the plan.
While we're talking about that, the conservation agent was out on this site before the snow fell, documented some fill material that she didn't think was appropriate, and wasn't within her jurisdiction, so she brought it to my attention. With some fill in the back of the lot that was put in, and has bricks and wood and other materials that will need to be addressed in the board's conditions.
Where is it of the site?
Uh, I can show you here, it's some, see on the existing conditions plan where the contours sort of pops up there, so this, this area here is where the fill is.
All right, and you're gonna haul all that off?
No, the intention was to work with that, given that that really sets where the, given the septic system grades, that's the grade that the house on that side needs to be at, so we weren't intending to haul that off. Here, but not, not considering what conservation says about the quality of the fill, in terms of the grade, that's where we want to be.
Okay, but you're gonna, you may have to haul it off.
There's some pieces of material that we saw at the outer edges of the fill that might need to be removed, but the majority of the fill is a pretty clean sandy clay material. We had to dig through it and set a level plateau to be able to set up to do our test bits for the septic, because the site dropped off to a steep grade originally. So we need about two hundred yards more fill just to be able to make the level plateau around the house to be able to backfill the foundation, because it does drop off pretty sharply to the southeast side. That's why we put in the retaining walls on the other side, because it drops pretty strong, you can see those retainers here.
What have they made out of?
Those are just old, those are fieldstone walls.
How high are they?
About two and a half feet for each wall.
You play the basement, or play the basement?
It has a basement.
The basement was walkout on the low side.
Where's the water table?
The water table is shallow, so, you know, depending on where on the site you dig, it's, you know, it's very shallow, we say if you get near the wetland, but in this area, it's generally gonna be beneath the loam and subsoil, so within thirty inches or less from grade.
But if you've got a walkout basement, how's that gonna work? You're building, you're building up the grade in order to give yourself a walkout basement above what the water table, is that the plan?
Uh, yeah, generally, right, yeah, so that's, that's why, again, we're trying to work with the topography, keep the garage on the high side, stay with the existing grade of the ground, so such that we have a walkout on the low side. We're not creating, we don't have an area really where we've done a big basement cut into that water table.
Yeah, could you just bring the architectural drawings back again? Do you have an elevation of the left hand side?
Yes.
So where's the walkout?
Walkout's here, between these two windows.
Is it?
Just a.
Can you go through the stone wall, or?
Right, just right through, this is just a veneer, this is, the foundation's gonna be cut out with a slider.
Okay, so you don't show the slider?
No, and this part it didn't show, because we took off the veneer in order to get the slider. The updated plans at the town that I gave with the hard drive have it on it.
Yeah.
So we're not disturbing this grade over here, as you can see over here, the walkouts right here, the walls and the stairs up to the back of the house, just to get to the grade here, so the walkout's down here with the stairs.
For what you don't show is any of this.
No, we didn't show the.
You don't show any of that?
The wall from that side, we showed just the east side of the house.
Well, there's a stair coming up here.
Right, that's a stone stair built into this, inside this retainer.
Right, but that doesn't show on this, this is, the door that you, that you say is there is right about here, right?
Yeah.
So.
So we're not disturbing any of this grade around the outside edge, and we set these stairs inside, the retaining wall's coming up against the side, coming up to this chimney, so we come up the back of the house, and then we'll be up to this level platform here.
When you drew those plans, you hadn't thought yet about the pool?
Probably.
Yeah.
And so then the revised set that went to the town, it's on the hard drive, has the walkout in it, and has all.
And this garage, it's hanging out there, it's over there to the left.
Right, the garage that can.
What's going on with the walkout? Basement floor level?
Eighty-two, eighty-two, that's what you're making. It's turned around. It's two seventy-two. It's two seventy-two, right outside.
So your, your basement floor level is six inches above grade?
Right.
And the, and the ground floor level, with the, with the floor all the way?
So it'd be ten feet above that on the.
Ten feet, two eighty-two.
Yeah, so that's two, no, that's.
This is two, that's two sixty-two, the basement floor, two seventy-two is the.
Yeah, that's, that's gotta be what it is.
Yeah, that's sixty-two.
Yeah.
But this, this elevation, spot elevation outside the house here can't be right.
That's, it should be two sixty.
It should say two sixty-two.
Actually, it does say it to the right.
Yeah.
If you look, what the seat's swinging around, you got like contour line to the right and left show, the two sixty-two and two sixty-four.
And those two condenser units aren't there.
Yeah, they slid to the right, so they're not where the doors, and that's shown on the new plan. And also shown over here.
You say the new plan, oh, this, okay, so this, your site plan doesn't agree with your architectural site plan.
Right, this here, is the retaining wall that we put out in the center. To get the house to have that. So what we did was we added a retaining wall on this side here, so as to be able to put the AC units in here. So there's a retaining wall here, as it shows, comes out here, the AC unit's there, and the generator.
When you say a retaining wall, it's, what is this retaining?
Just some soil, just to level this off a little bit here.
Okay, so it's coming in level here?
Right.
Okay, it's coming in level at.
Elevation two walls.
Two sixty, around two sixty-eight, two sixty-five, something like that?
Right, so you've got about two sixty-five, and it goes down again on the other, so there's two, two walls, two retainers, about four feet high.
But this is a different configuration, which is the, which is the correct one?
This one here, this is.
Okay, so on that one that you're pointing to, so, show me on the, show me on that one up there where the exit for the basement is.
Right here.
Right there, so according to this, that would be at about two sixty, between two sixty and two sixty-two in elevation.
Right.
Not two seventy-two.
Right, that's a, that's a mistake, that's in that box, but if you look at the grade lines that come around, it shows the right level.
And on our, our, our rather relatively old hydrology of the floodplains, your flood, your one percent level flood is at two sixty.
Right.
Doesn't give you much margin, and that data is forty years old, thirty years old, excuse me. So it's been a lot of buildup in the last thirty years, it's likely that elevation's not gonna, you know, it's not gonna be as real for you, so there might be some risk there for your doorway.
Well, I did put, I did replicate the wetlands when I did 300 Glen Road, and I put a relief, it's a bit extreme out of it, so it releases the water that falls in that area, and then it runs down to the stream at the other end, which wasn't there before. So that has a relief in it now that.
So that should help some, but I would really look at that hydrology and hydraulics very carefully.
Okay.
Because I know, I know that those, that that floodplain and that data is from like nineteen seventy-eight.
Okay, I don't know.
I mean, maps are newer, but they're just digitized old data, so.
All right, I, Kim, the, let the, I think the screen along here is probably, it probably needs to be beefed up.
On the side.
Eight to ten feet is really not gonna screen anything from anything. But I've, I've got a list of things here that, that, that need to be either verified, completed, submitted. What I would suggest is continuing the hearing. We've got to verify the fill, we need the, we need the vicinity plan, with the, coupled by RGFA figures, which is a requirement, it's one of our requirements, basic requirements when we're doing site plan review, that's it. We need to coordinate, the drawings are not coordinated, the civil drawings with the architecturals. We need to verify the soil removal clogs, especially if the fill that's on the site now needs to come off. And we need the lighting fixture plan and cuts, which we don't have.
Also, we need the, the height of the house, probably average natural grade.
That's on the site plan, and it's shown.
So what is the height?
So it's pretty close to right at the.
So you're right at the, at the limit?
Thirty-six and a half.
But that's a natural grade, not finished grade.
So that's all.
Correct. It was Titan, the architect reworked the roof lines to what you see here to get us.
To get under.
Yeah, we brought that roof line down to be consoling.
Okay, so we're gonna continue to what date?
Now, the, the light next to that.
I said, I mentioned that, we're missing it. Okay, what time?
Only eight thirty.
Okay, we'll continue to eight thirty on April the first.
Thank you.
I would get a better idea about.
Will we have an opportunity to, will we have an opportunity to comment on April first?
Yes, yes, there was, there were so many things.
Just flushing out.
Right.
And we know.
If you, if, yes, well, actually, why not, yes, please go ahead, let's.
Sure, my name's Frank Campbell, and I live at three oh seven Glen Road, which is diagonally across the street from that hurdle, or, or a pool, or, or wetlands, I'm not sure which. And I'm at three oh seven, my son-in-law's next door towards Oak Street, and he's, he'll be directly across from the, from the wetlands. And so this, what's concerned me most is the, is going to be a swimming pool, it's gonna be a septic system, there's probably gonna be a sprinkler system, and it's going to send more water down, I don't know where Dean is going to, what elevation the disposition of the overflow from this, from this increase in, in water coming down, downhill. And I know Dean did, but it's some, I think, considering the floodplain, it is, there was a floodplain there for many, many years, way back, and fathered the one, that's from the seventy, and it goes, and it tied in with the, with the, that's, that's the, the brook that's in back, there's a brook in each street, and what I'm concerned about, I live fifty feet from Glen Road, and I never have a drop of water myself, my son-in-law, whom there's a three eleven, he's always had water in his cell, not any great amount, but always had water there, there's a brook on this side of Glen Road, there's a brook on the other side of Glen Road, so, which takes it ultimately. Road, so, which takes it ultimately, any drainage from this project winds up in the shelter ultimately. So, my concern is the fact that if this, as a result of an additional house being in there, it's going to increase drainage to a point that it comes up, spills on Glen Road or under Glen Road, I may have watered myself, and so I wanted to consider it as a particular point.
Why was Dave Conway not here for this?
He had conflict. And he sent me an email bef, before the meeting, and said that he was wanting to continue reviewing drainage on this site.
Okay.
There are two...
Will he be here on April the first?
I hope he doesn't have a conflict.
No, he will be here on April the first.
He will be here on April first.
There are two stormwater infiltration systems which were not addressed.
Yeah.
In theory, none of the water is supposed to go off-site. Can you talk about those? I can talk about that if you want, sure. So, what we have presented to the town is an analysis of the runoff that speaks to some of your concerns, and generally, what we do is look at the site as it exists now, which in terms of the runoff, the topography slopes this way, it drains to the wetland area, as you said, that's correct. And our performance standard is to show the town that, and their consultant, so that he's satisfied that after development, those runoff conditions won't change, that is, there won't be an increase in the amount or the rate at which the runoff gets to the wetland, which is the design point. So, to do that, what we do is analyze and, and collect some of the runoff that falls, say, on the roof or the driveway, and infiltrate that into the ground. So, you're putting it in the ground, which is still connected to the wetland system, but you can account for some of the...
Yeah, but the wetlands are, the, the wetlands are controlled by drains that goes into this stream.
That's right.
And it backs, and it finds its way to, we call the floodplain. I've lived in this area for 90 years, so I know a little bit about it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So, it connects to, to that brook that goes into what we call the floodplain, and all the way downhill to Newton River Falls, and it connects with the brook that runs back of my house on the other side of the street, and they all wind up in a fault in the shelter.
If I could just quickly say that we actually, the planning board has a consulting civil engineer. Who is not here this evening, but will be here for the continuation, and will have had a chance to review your stormwater runoff calculations. He's worked with us for, for 16 years, so he understands...
The town engineer?
Not the town engineer. This is, this is a, a civil engineer that works as a consultant to the planning board. So, he will have a chance to analyze their calculations and strategy, and will have comments on the first of April, and I think that might be the, a good time to, to get into the, to the watershed issues that you were talking about.
Yeah.
So, just, if, if we could hold that, if you could hold your thoughts until he's had a chance to take a look at their drawings, might be more productive.
Okay, I have to say a couple things.
Yes.
One of the things which I would like to know, on April 1st, also is the change of impervious surface between what's there now and what is there. And also, it looks like you have a lot of lawn. Is there a change in the amount of lawn? Because that works like an impervious surface, even though it soaks in a couple inches, you still get a lot of runoff from that, you know, even though it's green, you know? And so, those are things that we really wanna know. You didn't mention anything about a sprinkler system. If you do decide to put a sprinkler system, you do require it, you put a well in for it, so you're not increasing the water budget in the town, and being a sensitive area, that's very important in this location.
There's two wells in the property, and it doesn't have, shallow well, shallow showers under there, certain old houses.
Well, exactly for that reason, but when people do put in, you know, watering systems, and we ask them to put well in, so they're taking the groundwater and using it, you know, rather than bringing all the water into the area.
You have your hand raised.
Well, I was just gonna support what Fred's saying. My name is William Martin, and I live at 301 Glen Road. I've lived there for 35 years. And I, you know, you know that we have surface water runoff problems and water table problems that we deal with on an annual basis. Some years bad, some years not so bad. And, you know, we just hope that you can find ways to continue to mitigate whatever problems may arise from an entirely new property. You have to recognize that construction in this area affects the runoff and affects the water table. I can tell you from just personal observation that that wetland, which is directly across the street from Fred's house, used to be wet, but maybe...